All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting order. We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you everybody for coming out. Uh, we'll go ahead. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections for the agenda?
Mm-hmm.
None? I'll take a motion to approve. Take that motion. Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Cassandra Jen, is there anything on there that you'd like to discuss? None, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you. Uh, Visitors, Council, done. Mayor's Report, just, uh, I want to put a little reminder out to the kids that are out riding their bicycles to maybe pay a little more attention when you're zigzagging off of the sidewalk, out on the Highway fifty-seven, on your cellphones and almost running into vehicles, because we don't want anybody to get injured. That was just recently, this week, there was like four of them zigzagging in and out, so. Just a friendly reminder, so pay attention to what you're doing. Look before you pull out, so. All we got there, Public Forum, we have one card, Mr. Eric Norrie.
Hello. This board has on notice that Eric Norrie and Betty Norrie, myself, intend to appeal revocation of our CUP fenced permit to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, which I guess is you guys. The city has never done a revocation and appeal of a CUP fenced permit before, and Ian has told me you do not utilize a standard form for appeals. Ian stated in an email to me that the contents of my appeal are at my discretion. So what you're saying is anything goes and there is no procedure, no process, no standards of review, no benchmarks or criteria that I need to meet to win the appeal. This is like we're going into it blind, everybody. Um, no rules to follow or no expectations. Well, I do have some expectations for the appeal, as I'm paying you a hundred and fifty dollars for this process, and I want it to happen fairly, honestly, and legally. My expectations for this appeal are, this appeal takes place in public in these chambers. The hearing of the appeal is recorded and posted to YouTube like every other hearing that you've ever done. My written application, which you guys don't have an application, probably gonna copy Rochester or any other community that actually is on board and actually has a functioning board that has this information, um, and written appeal, I want my application and my written appeal published with your answer and determination, so the whole community can read what this is all about. I want the hearing in accordance with the State of Minnesota and the League of Minnesota Cities Guidelines. I want you to allow me remote access as I live out of state. I don't know when you're gonna decide to do this, once I pay you the hundred and fifty bucks. You guys set the time and date, so you need to be flexible with me, so I don't, so I need to do this appeal. And I need Melanie Left, the city attorney, to provide city staff and the board members, you guys, a written legal opinion as it relates to the defenses of my appeal. None of the council are attorneys, and none of you are expected to know or learn the laws of Minnesota. You count on her to advise you. I don't expect Ryan to understand the legal definition of fraud, and if the city could legally put a clause in my CUP to stop me from building up front. I don't expect Dan to know if Minnesota Statute fifteen ninety-nine allows the city to approve me but deny my permit at the same time. Paul, I don't expect you to know if the law allows the city to use neighborhood opinion in approving or denying my CUP. How do you know if that's legal? It's not your job to go look on the League of Minnesota Cities and see if they're, what their website says. Brian, I don't expect you to know if it's legal to place a clause in a resolution for my CUP permit that the applicant never knew, me, or never acknowledged or agreed to. I don't expect you to know that. You're counting on Melanie Left on that one, too. Melissa, I don't expect you to know if there's a law that states that the terms of a CUP permit must be reasonable and in accordance with the ordinance. You're counting on Melanie for that. For these reasons, I ask that Melanie Left, the city attorney, provide the city and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, before my appeal of my CUP revocation takes place, a letter of legal opinion. This is typical and customary and standard in every other community that has these kind of issues. The attorney is not doing it, because she doesn't want to be accountable, and she doesn't want you guys to be accountable either. She wants you guys to be in the dark. My appeal directly relates to laws and statutes of the State of Minnesota, and for these reasons, if the board does not have a written legal of opinion, they cannot rule fairly, as this appeal is not about, do you like me, and it's not about, did I grow up in Cassin, okay? It's about the law, okay? And by the way, Ian's not here, but make sure we have those minutes to make sure that you don't put anything in the minutes about what I just talked about, because that's what you've been doing in the past, okay? I talked about a couple really important things.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, you're welcome. Appreciate it. I'll get the hundred and fifty bucks to you, and we'll get that process started.
Next, Committee Report. There's none that I see. So, old business, twenty twenty-six budget information.
So including your package, you have some information, just some basics. Some of it's for, you know, public, you know, why the property taxes change, you know, I think that's something that you're all aware of at the council level. We also have that, the auditor certification there. That information was forwarded out to the council members to let you know what the estimated market value increase would be for next year, so you have the information. And then the adjusted net tax capacity, those are numbers that we try to take into account when we're looking at the structural changes to the budget, not so much the levy, but the valuation side of it, that the county deals with more than we do. But, um, so you have that information. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to take those. Otherwise, we're fortunate tonight to have a couple department heads here, mostly the general fund department heads. We've got Chief Fitch from the Fire Department, um, the supervisor of Public Works Supervisor Ben Langen's gonna be here to present his items, and then, of course, our police chief is here as well. So, um, I think if you have any questions for them, that's great. You all have the information, same information they have, those items in the packet or ones that they have, they can work off of. So if you have questions on a particular line, or why there's an increase or decrease, that's certainly a good time to be asking them that. So I think with that, Joe, I think we're starting off with you. Certainly welcome to come up here, otherwise you're welcome to stay there, too, if you're more comfortable, I think.
It just depends on what you got for questions.
Hey, Joe, um, it looks like we are budgeting again similar to last year, fifty thousand dollars that we've got just in here labeled as other equipment. I guess I'm just curious, like, of that fifty thousand dollars, what are you planning on using it for this year?
That's a five-eighty line, Joe.
Yep, five-eighty.
Yep. That line, that I believe is the carryover, that's our two percent money that gets carried over that we get from the state. It's just a estimated, that's, that's a, because we don't have-
That's more of your capital, I think, Joe, is what it's used for. Yeah, so it looks like year-to-date, you've got about thirty-eight thousand, three eighty-two that was used for, I imagine you're probably utilizing that for some of your SEBAs and things like that when you purchase items.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, the last capital stuff that we had was for the, um, the last truck that we did, and some of those air packs and stuff that we bought.
Are you planning on purchasing more air packs, or anything else like that? I know there's radios and things like that that you're looking at.
Not, yeah, not anytime soon. So, um, if you, so like our current budget, like if you look at our small tools, you know, it shows that we're about fifty thousand over budget. That's specifically for the radios. We got fifty thousand worth of grants last year. So the grants fell on last year's income. We didn't receive the radios until this year, so all that falls on the small tools and stuff for this year. So if you're looking at like this year, that's the, that's the big thing on that budget line that really, really kind of jumps out, because it's way over, way over that twenty thousand dollar small tools, so. Um, but yeah, from a, from that, that fifty thousand, um, we would, we've got scheduled to get a couple of thermal imaging cameras. We've been working on a couple of agencies to try and get some, some grants to help with that. We just recently got a donation from the Lions Club to help with some of the costs on some of that. But yeah, that's, that's the biggest need right now, is to get some of our, our thermal imaging cameras replaced, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Question for you. With your increase with a new admin officer, are they gonna be, help offload some of your work, but I know that they talked of not using the administrative assistant from the police department, but are they gonna be able to help you with grants and, or how are you planning on using?
Yeah, so like that, that position will, will take over a lot of the duties, because Amy, the current admin that we shared with PD, is, is her role's increasing with some different changes and stuff from the county level, so she's just getting busier on that side, so we're gonna go back to having our own admin. So the reports that we file on every call and that kind of stuff all gets, when we run, you know, our monthly numbers and different things like that, you know, from our call volume and stuff like that, that I quarterly kind of try and get to Tim for you guys to see. They'll be in charge of, you know, pulling those reports for me and that kind of stuff. Plus, we're gonna add a kind of a records. Right now, we're just kind of scattered across the board since we moved into the new building with where we're keeping records and how we're keeping records and some of the historical stuff that we have, and to try and get them to kind of clean some of that, that up, and, and so that's, that's how that position's gonna get. But yes, at the end of the day, that admin position will be basically, you know, reports and then records.
That's what I thought, but I just like verify.
Yep, yep.
Anybody else got any questions for him?
Okay.
Thank you, I guess.
Yeah, as always, if there's anything else comes up, or you got questions on anything, don't hesitate to either get them to Tim and to me, or just to me directly.
All right, next up, we've got Ben.
Maybe.
It went down.
I saw that chair jump at you. Yeah. Um, I guess I'll just, I'll just start off explaining our increases. General Fund for Streets, Repair Maintenance Supplies, and then Repair Maintenance, those increases are due to tires. Um, it's probably, it's roughly ten thousand dollars to do four tires on a grader. They have six, so it just keeps going up. Um, we haven't replaced any grader tires since I've started, um, so we have a plan of swapping tires, and, I mean, we're trying to save any, any dollar we can. Skid loader tires, it's about every other, every year. Um, I did go out and we got, we had extra rims, so we got snow tires that don't get used during the winter, or during the summer, so we just put them on in the winter, so we saved a little money there. Um, let's see, the heavy machinery and motor vehicles, that's, that's gonna be for that contractor's truck. To replace what we have, we're looking at probably a hundred and fifty thousand, and that's just the truck and, and the box. That doesn't cover the sander, um, which, you know, like, that's in ice and snow, other equipment. We're looking at maybe ten thousand dollars for a tailgate sander. Um, it's, it would be very beneficial, I mean, we use, every, every department uses that truck. Um, and then we increased the budget in sidewalks. Um, thanks to Charlie, we were able to find a contractor to do sidewalks. Unfortunately, this year, you know, we had to cut that down, so we weren't able to get as much done as we would have liked to. Um, so hopefully, you know, we can continue and keep getting those repaired. Um, we got most of the metals done, so that was a huge, huge chunk taken care of. Um, and in the future, it's not like, you know, we got, there's so much backed up that eventually we're not gonna have to have that huge number. So it'll, it'll come down. It's, you know, if we can get fifty thousand done next year, that's gonna cut it down to, we'll just say fifteen, twenty thousand next year. So that would be a huge, huge addition. Um, and then, you know, the other one, I actually had to talk to Tim a little bit about this one, is the bike trails, um, improvement other than buildings. Um, that's part of that project with the fifty-seven bike trail, you know, we're, we're getting that spot out by the cemetery and the Windsor Court or whatever done, so they're gonna, we're gonna work on trying to get that the rest of the way through town. Um, and then like, you know, we've taken a big chunk that's not gonna be included this year, is that playground that we built in northeast. So that's a huge chunk that at least the park side isn't gonna see in the budget. Um, if we wanna talk about the pool, we can talk about the pool, but I'd rather not.
Before you jump into the pool, you were talking about the parks.
On, what's that?
Before you jump in the pool, you were talking about the parks.
Yep.
Um, so northeast, obviously that was a big modular this year. We paid for part of it last year, paid for part of it this year.
Yes.
Um, what's your next big park improvement project?
So, I mean, we, Park Board, we've kind of gone back and forth. Um, one, one cost-effective is the northwest soccer field. Um, it's a grass land, no parking lot. Um, we have quite a bit of reclaim, and we're gonna prep it as if we were gonna blacktop it. So we'll use the reclaim as a base. It'll give us a parking spot that doesn't turn into a mud hole. Um, beneficial in the fact of wintertime when we haul snow out there, we're not gonna have, get stuck in those thaws and things like that. Um, we've talked about modulators out there to kind of, you know, address that far out northwest outside of town group. Um, we've talked about a pavilion at northeast park. So there's things in play. Um, one of the bigger, I guess, needs, in my opinion, would be field space. Um, soccer was one of those ones that had reached out to me, northeast, or, uh, sorry, Lions Park is a great spot for soccer fields. But we'll have to hire someone to level it out, or at least make it usable, so kids aren't getting hurt. Um, the cost on that, I don't know yet. I haven't, you know, gone any further with that. So those are the up and coming with the parks. Um, as far as modulars, the only one that we would maybe put in at some point would be out in that northwest soccer field, so.
Do you think that the, um, the pickleball project is something, what's the timeframe you think for that? Because I know that's, you're looking at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars just for that.
Yeah. Um, I'll be honest with you, we kind of, we kind of put that pickleball on the backburners with Manorville doing their pickleball court. Um, I think that alleviated some of that, you know, stress or desire that we needed to get another one added at Lions, which, that helps us out a lot. Unfortunately, we should have done two, at least two at the time, and I get money is an issue, um, but I think, I don't think I have to worry too much about pickleball at this point. Yes, in the long run, I would like to at least get one more court out there. Um, who knows how long that's gonna continue to be a desire. I don't know. And then, I guess, sticking with parks, the, the other increase was the other equipment. Um, we're working on like a year one of three for a new lawnmower. Um, our moors are starting to get a little bit older. Um, we have one that's probably a two thousand eleven or twelve. Um, we work on it constantly. It just, they get, they get beat up, but we, I'd like to get it traded in before it's not worth anything. So that's kind of that. Um, and then with the pool, the biggest things are, are sand filters. They're, they're due for cleaning and putting new sand in. That's about ten thousand dollars. Um, health inspector came this year and noticed the pitting in our pool. You know, that's something that we need to address. Um, she would like us to address it before she comes back. She understands that budgetary issues and things like that. Um, to do it right, I'm not, I'm still working with our pool guy to see what the cost is. Um, we talked to Dodge Center, they had to go in and have someone grind everything down smooth and then put a new coat down, so I'm sure that's not cheap. But we have steps on the water slides that, you know, Tim and I actually had discussed, I will potentially going to a different style, so that we're not trying to resurface the steps all the time. Um, but, I mean, let's be honest, the pool's, what, a little over ten years old now?
Twelve, twelve and a half, yeah.
Yeah. Things fail. They get used, what, three, four months of the year, and then go into winter. So, uh, we're starting to see some of those things rear their head, so. Does anyone have any questions, I guess?
Uh-huh.
So.
Go ahead.
So, you were talking about soccer fields and leveling off at Lions Park.
Yep.
Have you looked out to see if there's any booster clubs for the soccer teams, or any private individuals willing to donate time or money to level that?
We haven't, I haven't gotten that far, because we haven't officially approved anything, at least at Park Board. These were just ideas thrown out, you know, for the future.
Yeah, I just, you know, curious on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and I did a little chatting about the contractor truck. I've been checking around. How, in my opinion, it's well needed.
Yep.
It's old, we're spending a lot of staff time fixing it. How much would it cost, and I know you ain't giving a number tonight, but if we didn't buy a contractor truck, how much would it cost us to hire somebody to do that? How many, what do they get an hour? I mean, if, we'd have to hire everything done.
Ooh, I don't know. It, it's hard to give you a number just based on what we use it for, all the different-
But we use it every day.
Yeah.
So it's valuable. I just, I just don't wanna say not to buy it, and then all of a sudden find out, we got staff standing around waiting for a contractor to come do a job, and now we're paying staff, plus we're paying somebody, because I don't know what the hourly rate is, but I'm sure it's-
Uh, it's, it's hard to put a number on that. Um-
Because, I mean, you'd have to have them deliver rock.
Right, and it's just, I mean, even like, you know, use it for sanding the parking lots of here and the library, the fire hall. Um, it's a little bit tougher to get like a dump truck through those, those smaller spaces. Um, stump grindings and things like that. I mean, we do utilize it every day, and it's not just our department electric, given water.
It's stuff all the way.
Yep. Um, it's just easier to work out of. I'm not saying we can't go to a smaller model. Is it, is it, it's not gonna be as efficient for us, because we're gonna have to still take more trips, but I think comfortably a hundred and fifty is where we're at with what we have. Yeah.
No, I just, I, I did, checking around, I've seen it gets used a lot.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. You know, I just started thinking that if we started spending money to pay somebody to do that work, we're gonna spend more.
I wouldn't even know where to begin. It would be quite a bit higher than what, you know, to pay for a new truck would-
Plus then you gotta wait on them, too.
Right.
No.
I think Ryan might have a question. Ryan, do you have a question?
I had a couple. Um, we did raise the park fees for new developments, right, to start, didn't we talk about that a couple months ago?
Yeah, the park dedication was, was adjusted late last year, I think.
Okay.
So we went to a higher valuation per acre. I don't think we've approved the per lot number yet. That's something we've talked about. I know Brad Shybit presented-
Because we could use that for like the northwest, if we built a new modular, or is that considered a park that's already existing?
The, which one?
The northwest, where you have just a field. Would that be considered a new park or no?
Typically, those parkland dedication fees go towards new parks and new subdivisions. Now, I mean, that is at your discretion as a council. I mean, you know, the, the money is in the general fund. It's your, you know, wanting to use if you wanted to use it for something else, but typically, that's kind of what we try to reserve those dollars for.
So we do have that new development to the east, two developments to the east, actually, from where that park is at.
Yeah, to the north.
And it, that has a new, a new path is being paved this week for it, so it connects.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if that was a location, if that was money we could send right next to it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's certainly one we could take into, take a look at. Parkland dedication, that's a good question. I don't remember the amount off the top of my head. I know Ian, it's in a letter that he sends to the developers, so I mean, there's a number there. I imagine those, the sack and whack and parking fines had to be paid, so I can check and see what that was.
If there's a better location, by all means, I, I'm not an expert on where to put things. I'm just-
Yeah.
If that was a location with that new path that kind of connects every day.
No, I mean, that's, that's kind of the idea, is that that'll feed down into that park. So absolutely, that's something I think you could stretch to, to utilize that for some funding there.
And then, we've had a lot of people and commit groups, soccer, football, baseball, like every, every little local entity in town that needs space. I know, Tim, in your administrative report, you're gonna talk about the local sales tax. Is there, and I know Rochester's having some issues with their big sports complex project that's different, um, but is that something we eventually could talk about adding an outdoor complex of some kind with pickleball, baseball, softball, soccer, like just to have that one location?
Well, as you mentioned with Rochester, I hate to overpromise, but I mean, I do think that if you're looking for a sales tax of that nature, you wanna find some kind of project that was of somewhat, you know, original significance. You want it to be something that, you know, it isn't something like just a ball field or something like that, but a complex that maybe did have multiple uses would be something that would be more in the legal description of what they're looking for when you look at those sorts of things.
Yeah.
And that is something that a lot of cities are doing, you know, especially up north. A lot of the communities up north, the, kind of the tourist towns, they make a lot of money in the summer off of their sales tax. They utilize that for amandies that then can be used by the community for the whole year, which for them, that's a justification. They go, well, two-thirds of this is being paid by out-of-towners anyways, when they go out for supper or whatever, and then they have the indoor, you know, pool or the indoor facility that they can use year-round. So, um, that is something that, you know, I did, I mentioned it here, because the process has changed back to where it was two years ago, so.
Because we had, I think, Paul, you had brought that up a couple years ago about ways to maybe help with the pool. I feel like we had that conversation, but I didn't know if it could be for a new project or an existing project. I don't know.
I think you could justify it for, for either a new or a used, but you'd want it to have some sort of regional significance. Now, I mean, you know, Dodge Center, uh, has a nice pool. Byron doesn't, Manorville doesn't, so I mean, you could say, hey, you know, and I know, um, Ben and I have talked about, you know, increasing utilization by our neighboring communities, and that might be something you could say, this is a regional significant project, because we're gonna serve Byron and Manorville, or something like that, too, so.
I just look at, we already have students coming in from Dodge Center to play soccer and hockey, and we have Stuart Brown now coming in for gymnastics, so we, maybe we are seeing a need for it, and a lot of our sports are saying they can't have tournaments and have groups come in and do those big events, because there's no space for it.
You know, to your point, too, about that, is I think that's something we need to have further conversations with the school, especially with the new superintendent. You know, I'm not sure what, what her perspective on facilities is as much yet. I know she's kind of talked about staffing a little bit, but, and the joint ventures group, you know, I'm not sure where their project dollars are looking to go over the next couple of years, but that's something where, you know, we, we know that the, the high school, for example, they're short one baseball field, and they have been for several years now. So that's one that is kind of a, in that, at some point in time, that probably needs to be done, you know, and then for us, it's, it's maybe utilizing some of the space we already have. For example, Lions, there's space where you could do some fields. Um, obviously Northwest is a good space for the utilization of, of pre-existing parks that we don't have to reinvent the wheel then, so.
Well, the next joint venture is October ninth.
Yes, I believe so.
And it'll be the first time with the new superintendent, so I don't know how much discussion will happen, but we're gonna sit down and-
Well, maybe if you'd be able to give us an update on that, Ben, you know, just write up a memo for us.
I'm not being there. It, you are, okay. In my opinion, I guess if, you know, to Ryan's point, if we're gonna look at a complex, right, we need the space. Um, so is that, you know, where, where would that be? You know, would we go, can we start working west of the Gun Club Road? Or, you know, what about that field space by Zed? Is that, I know there's a for sale sign out there that says pending, but, you know, before we start thinking about, I don't wanna just add a field here and there. If we're gonna do a complex, we need to do a full-fledged complex.
Just, it was just an idea.
I know, I, I don't think there's a-
Maybe do our budget discussion tonight, but it is something you've been thinking about a long time.
Yes, long-term. Just when I see, when you hear those things and you think, oh, the local sales tax, is that something that would bring in people to our town if we had a complex where you could bring teams in for competitions?
You'd have to spend substantial money just to plan it to even go ask for it, so you gotta be prepared for it.
Yeah.
It's not an easy, because you'd have to have all your ducks in a row before you could even go ask for it.
It, it gets, if the challenge is hearing everyone, we, we say no a lot, but is there a way that we can eventually say yes? That's, because our youth is what's driving our town.
Maybe you can report back to us after that, joint ventures, or maybe Dan can give us a memo, an update what their plans are for the next couple of years, because at some point- point in time, it'll be our turn again.
Yeah.
You know, and I don't know, I think the last time we utilized those funds was for the pickleball court in-
Yup.
Southwest, so that would've been three years ago, maybe? So I, you'd think we'd be up in the rotation for a project then.
Yup. And old Manorville's got their, you know, part of theirs was the outdoor rink and the, the additions to the, well, they didn't do, that dog park was a long time ago.
I mean, I'm guessing the school-
I see, it was through that local sales tax.
I'm guessing it was, I think it was the school's turn, and they were gonna do lights or something this year.
Yup, they were still working on the scoreboard, whatever, yeah.
Anybody else got any questions?
Yeah, can you, um, comment on, uh, line five twenty buildings and structures? It looks like we budgeted fifty thousand this year, and we've got fifty thousand next year. Do you remember what that's for in particular? I, I remember a conversation maybe about restrooms at Lyons, is that still in the works? What's, what's going on with that?
Well, part of that does go towards paying that modular down, so we bought that early, so some of that money goes towards paying that down, um-
Modulars are considered buildings and structures, are they showing?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yup.
Um, but I, I know that, I think, talking with Ben, maybe we're gonna defer that bathroom for the time being, I think, Ben?
Yeah.
There's some, some issues getting sewer and water there, but-
Um, for sure, at Lyons, after talking with Charlie, it's, uh, the water's not the problem, it's the sewer, trying to get that to where it needs to go. I'm, I'm not in that department, I don't know that stuff. Um, realistically, you know, I'd like to see, uh, a pavilion or something of that nature out at northeast, um, allowing us to utilize that and rent it out like we do with all of our other pavilions. Um, I'll be honest with you, I'm not too keen on public restrooms. Um, my guys are the ones that clean them, and it is a disaster most of the time. We've already had restroom, we've had a, I had a affordable portable remove a restroom from northeast because people were destroying it. That's not fun to deal with, and it's not fun for that company to deal with. I think we can, you know, I, I tried to help out, out at Nor-, um, sorry, Lyons, and we got a handicap accessible restroom put out there, so that, you know, parents, when they're with their kids, they have room to go in there and help their child, you know. I just, it's hard with those rest, out, public restrooms. The nice thing about the pool is, there's so many people up there, yes, every once in a while, we have issues, but there's so many people that it doesn't attract the, the problems that we would probably see somewhere else. But, yeah, I would like to see more pavilions put up.
Okay. Um, so we mentioned a dog park, we had, uh, discussions about a dog park, is, is that still on the plans, too?
Um, we, I mean, Park Board, we kinda put that on the back burners, um, I have a potential location up by the water tower by CHS, um, realistically, people who need a dog park are people in apartments, right? Um, it's right off the bike trail, um, I did a quick quote, called some fence guys, we're looking at twenty to thirty thousand for fencing, to fence that area, now that doesn't include any of the amenities, um, actually, the gentleman that spoke, Mr. Norrie, um, he actually reached out to me about a dog park, and I just told him if he wants to put a committee together that wants to help raise money, maybe we can work something out. I said, it's not gonna be in the next year, um, we kind of already allocated where we're gonna put our funds, but if that's something that they wanna do and get a group of like-minded people together to help raise money, whether it's, you know, maybe we cover the cost of the fence, or, and, and they put the amenities or whatever we need to put into the dog park, that's what we would do.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right. Next.
Okay, he's ready.
Want to throw in questions, or should I just jump into some of my major ones?
Go right ahead.
So, the, one of the biggest ones for me is under three seventy, um, maintenance support fees, that's our body cameras and fleet cameras that you guys already approved, about twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, three twenty-one telephone, that's, uh, for cradle point internet reception in the cars, that's to go along with the cameras, so all the data gets dumped and, um, it's, that's our office, so that's our internet for the, for the squad cars. Uh, four forty, professional services, that's our-
I was gonna stop you right there. When you put it under telephone, can you next time, or change it on there, so you list that it is in for the cars, you know, that it's for the satellite for the cars? You know, put a slash behind there, 'cause when I see it and I see telephone, I assume it's cell phones and phone.
It's, it's cellphone service, it's-
But, I mean, if you could state that on there, it could be, then you wouldn't have to explain it.
On my phone it is, but I don't, when, when it gets to you, I don't know what it looks like.
Okay. 'Cause that was one of my questions, what it's gonna be, but you already got it.
Yeah.
We'll have to work with Sarah and see what we can do there.
So when I present my stuff with Sarah and Tim, I have it written down on, that's what I got right here, but when it gets to you, you don't see, some of those, like, the line item, what, what the description is, is hard to describe, and that's-
Okay.
Some of these questions. So I got that one, uh, fuel cost, two twelve, we're always, that's always a moving target, and thirty thousand's always been about what we are, for, I think we're, we're budgeting about twenty-three this year, probably gonna make that, but just, I, I prefer to budget enough. Uh, all of our stuff, uh, like four forty-four is, uh, uh, fees for our iClimber, iClimber digital evidence increase, um, membership fees, um, those just annual increases, little small amount. Uh, one oh-two overtime, we've already spent, in June, we'd already been at forty, we're at forty-five thousand, so we're well over budget for overtime this year, so we're gonna be over, we'll be over budget next year, I know we will, um, especially with the new, uh, leave that's coming into effect, we still have to backfill those shifts, so, if we have somebody that takes off twelve weeks, we have to have somebody work those shifts, too, or as many as we can on overtime, we're twenty-four seven operation, three hundred and sixty-five, so we have to have somebody here. So, and right now, we use overtime to do that. I think I hit the major ones.
Yeah, um, I think the one that stands out most to me is five fifty motor vehicles. It seems like pretty much every year, we're cycling through new vehicles, and this actually isn't the cost of the vehicles, I understand that this is the cost to get them fitted for you guys to use, right?
It's about twenty-five thousand dollars for the outfit, yes.
Yeah, so, I guess I'm, I'm a bit concerned about that being a recurring theme that we do every single year, and rather, rather than maybe every other year. So, um, like, the fleet that you got, can you comment on, like, the age of the vehicles and condition?
So-
How many vehicles are there and stuff like that?
So we got about seven vehicles, and we try to do a seven-year rotation on vehicles, is what our goal is, and at one point, we stopped getting vehicles, and then we got four in twenty nineteen, so that is what, we've been messed up since twenty nineteen, 'cause we, years before that, we weren't getting one vehicle a year, so, if we just maintain the one vehicle per year, that fulfills our needs right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? While you were out, Tim, I did ask him, until, he just got it on here, it's telephone, he says, could you show a little more detail on here? 'Cause the first thing we were questioning is why you spend so much on phones, but it's for the link in the cars and-
Sure, I can ask Sarah to make a, I can ask Sarah to make a different note on that one.
If it just shows more on our end, then it saves-
Sure.
More questions. 'Cause it was like, that's a lot, but now it makes sense.
Sure. So what would be a better accurate, more accurate way of describing that?
Internet, it, data, internet.
Well, I'll put it behind, and put it in squad, satellite, squad.
And it is also a telephone, too, that's where our telephone came out of there.
But maybe put it in, used in squads also, or something, just so we know that-
I'll, I'll talk to Sarah.
Somehow to know that it's not just the building and cellphone.
We can rename that line, and maybe it'll be more accurate, too, or maybe just more easy for us to understand what it is, then.
Telecommunications?
Yeah.
Yeah, something, just-
And, and, you know, when I see telephone, I think just strictly of telephone, I don't think of-
Sure.
It's a landline in the car, Dan.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think of, yeah.
And we've eliminated landlines over the years, 'cause we're-
Yeah.
The squad goes to our offices, so, that's where we have all the-
Yep.
Cell phones and the built-in internet.
Uh, Josh, could you touch on five eighty, what's in the other equipment line?
What's that one label, I don't have that one now.
Other equipment, um, portable radios?
Well, both, that's the, uh, portable radios, we try to get one or two every year. We, originally, we were budgeting for, for twenty thousand, now we just get four, and it keeps on going down, which you can actually get with twenty thousand dollars, and I, I hope I maybe might be able to get three or twenty thousand, but it's probably gonna be two, and then, that's just something, that, that keeps us on a rotation of a new radio every ten years, so officers have a radio, then squads have a radio, and we have spares that we use for, uh, reserves to use, too. And then sometimes I pass them on to Joe, too. So, radios are expensive.
They're very expensive.
Where on the line item was the, um, increase we had with the Dodge County Sheriff's Department, they had us purchasing, purchasing-
That was also under three seventy.
Three seventy.
Now I had that budget for this year, too.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
That, nothing else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
So there is a resolution there, um, pending any feedback you have.
I'll just comment here that compared to our last meeting, um, it looks like we've reduced by about forty-four thousand, which, uh, if I did my math right, means our percent increase is at seven point eight-
That's right.
-versus the eight point seven that we were looking at last meeting. And of course, this is, this is gonna be our maximum rate, we can always-
Yep.
Cut it yet in the future.
Any other questions? If not, I would-
And Sarah's in the, with that email bar, the email that's in there, or in our Dropbox from Sarah, about the seven point eight increase would be the break-even point, can you explain that a little bit for anyone that's watching at home, what that means?
Sure, so as I kinda mentioned a little bit earlier about the valuations, um, each year, the, the county calculates the estimated var, market value increase and the amount of property valuation. And so what they've told us is that, um, if we were to keep the levy, and that's what they're telling us, not saying it necessarily is gonna be reflected, they're saying a seven point eight percent would keep our tax levy rate at zero. So in essence, you know, we're absorbing new value, a lot of that is commercial value from last year, we know that it's always a lagger, so, um, the new value added to the property tax base is from new homes that are purch, you know, built. Um, last year, we had EGAN, and we had a couple of the commercial buildings on the south side, the five oh seven fast come on at the tax, tax rolls, so what they do is they, basically, it's in essence broadening that pie, and actually, this, this increase would be just slightly reducing our tax rate, um, so it would, it'd be a zero percent increase on the tax rates. So valuation may go up, that is not something that we necessarily set-
Yeah.
But the tax rate itself will be at zero, that's what the county's told us.
So basically, if your house, that value doesn't change, your tax theoretically should stay close to even, there's always-
Or go down, if you're, if it doesn't go up.
Yeah, theoretically. So that's, so it's a good way to utilize the growth and buy some things and that we-
People always are asking questions on how that works, so never hurts to remind them.
Any other questions? If not, I would take a motion to approve the preliminary twenty twenty-five tax levy, collectible in twenty twenty-six.
I'll make the motion to approve the seven point eight.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, please, second.
Thank you, Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pause, thank you. All right. New business, and none?
We have one more item in our old business, Mayor, we have the purchase agreement-
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
I apologize.
So this is just officially to finalize this, council's well aware, we've been working on this project for a couple of years now, um, so you've got in there the purchase agreement information, and then a resolution that would officially, uh, approve that sale of that eastern half of that, uh, Caston Crossing or Cemetery land, um, for expansion of the modular home, um, subdivision.
And we got all our maintenance agreements and all our agreements finalized?
They've all been signed.
Okay.
I know there's still engineering that Brandon's working with the engineers on, which, that may continue for some, some time, but-
Yeah, but at the end of the day, you know, we've approved the conditional of us getting things resolved, and, um, the meat and potatoes there, it's just a matter of just cleaning some stuff up, so I'm not, not concerned that we're going down a path that we can't recover from, or, you know, clean the plans up and get them together, so, and the maintenance stuff I'll defer to, I think, administration.
Yeah, I mean, the maintenance agreement's been signed by the, the purchaser.
Okay.
So he's agreed to, you know, the items that we asked him for, the development agreement's been signed, um, so anyways, this is kind of the, the last step to allow him to move forward with his lenders.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just ask, um, the sale price, we've already pretty much dedicated those funds to certain improvements, I assume, in that area?
Sure, um, the sale price, we're anticipating utilizing some of those funds for the western infrastructure improvements, that way it wouldn't have to be coming out of a tax levy, it would be just funded based, you know, based on the, the funds that are in the account.
Yep, okay, that's what I remembered, I just wanted to clarify.
And I think maybe to clarify is more that'll open up that west third of the property that we're gonna hold on to.
I thought I was clear, but I guess I wasn't.
We didn't need to do any more improvements to make this project happen, so this project is not obligating us to use that money to do something, it's just additional projects in the future, so.
Any other questions? I'd, I would take a motion to approve the resolution for the purchase agreement.
Make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Ryan, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Pause, all right, thank you.
I just wanna be clear, so with that resolution approval, we feel the conditions have been satisfied, uh, for the, um, for project to proceed, so I know that they anticipate having their, the contractors out there to take, change the tile setup, the way that works, they'll be rerunning the tile from the south into a, a different route, so they can start working on that field itself. Okay.
Okay, then, now, new business, so none, administrator's report.
Sure, couple items just to highlight here, bring this up. Um, we're meeting tomorrow with the folks from KBS, right, Linda?
Yes.
To look at the city hall efficiency improvements, um, a lot, a lot of things, um, with the windows especially, that we're looking at doing, should, like, you know, we can feel the breeze coming through in the wintertime pretty good, I think that'll be a cost savings in the long run for us, um, some money was set aside for that last year in the, in the stabilization fund, so hopefully we'll have some good numbers for you at a meeting in October. Uh, fiscal futures, a lot of things going on at the state level, uh, with LMC, that committee's work is wrapping up, um, a lot of arguments, the outstate, in-state argument is continuing with, uh, different policies, and I'm not sure that'll be resolved, I'm I'm guessing the in-state folks will probably win their, win their battle probably, but anyway. Met with Manville, talked about INI. That's something we'd like to do on a regular basis. I had a good discussion. Charlie and Charles Dappin were both with me and we had them with the mayor and the clerk and the maintenance worker from Manville. They, they do hope to rectify some of their larger issues. They've found where they are. They're looking at lining some of those pipes. I'm going to be digging those up and hoping to get those fixed before it freezes this year. The bypassing, you know, they're, they're doing it on a regular basis when they have major rains. Thankfully this year they only had to do it, I think, once. But I'm hoping that, they have an expansion coming. They're going to be putting a new lift station in. South of the golf course road, there's a Bigelow development there. That's going to be another forty houses and so that'll be kind of unique because they're going to be pumping that sort of directly into town. And so that'll be interesting to see how that goes with a larger expansion from them. But we'll meet with them and let them know, you know, we've also let them know that we're talking about some plant improvements as well. And try to communicate to them, you know, so they have plenty of time to build that into their rates because they'll, they'll have to participate in that cost as well, so. Moratorium on sales taxes, Ryan, you touched on that a little bit. So it's kind of reverted to that original process, which the way that would work is that, you know, you would, you would go to your legislators and ask for permission. They would give you a conditional permission, then you would go to the voters in a regular election and then it would go back to legislature for actual law to be written in the next cycle after that. So it would be a two-year process if that were something that we were to look at. But as I mentioned there, the regional significance is something they are definitely taking a look at. In fact, if you've read the Post Bulletin and followed Rochester, that's kind of one of the struggles they're having is because just building a couple of baseball fields outside is not necessarily what I think some of the folks in Rochester thought they were voting for when they voted for that sales tax. I think there was a lot of discussion about indoor facility. I, I'm not sure, I'm not, you know, staff there, I don't live in Rochester, but I think that's what a lot of people kind of envisioned that project being. And so there's some pushback from their legislators, both on the Democratic and Republican side in Rochester, so. Annual meeting, I included that information from Compass's annual meeting there. The main speaker was Matt Nolan. It was interesting his perspective. So battery storage, that's, that's where we're looking pretty hard right now. We'll have a lot of information coming to you in the next couple of months. The solar applications for the public buildings were submitted this week. So we'll hear back from the state hopefully in the next couple of weeks. But it sounds like battery storage is probably where we're looking because of the ability for that to get a good high accreditation. MISO is going to be downgrading the accreditation for diesel over the next three years from eighty, eighty-nine percent down to forty-nine percent. So the batteries will be hopefully in the ninety percentile. So even though they're a little bit more expensive, that seems like that's kind of where we're going to be trending to. EMS update there, they've got to get their information submitted. Sounds like possibility of some continuing financial support from the state over the next couple of years. Budgets, let's see. And let's see what else have I got here? I think that's pretty much all I've got. So I'd take any questions anyone has.
Here and none. We'll go ahead and do engineers' report.
Alright. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Two items tonight, both of them are regarding extending our request to extend some construction contracts. So we kind of put them on at the same time. I'll jump with the first one, Southwest Reconstruction. That is in a formal change order. I do have a cover sheet there, but I'll jump to the second sheet of that, which is SL Contractors Vice President Trevor Lamplin's email request to extend the project. So he knows raining weather factors beyond his control, has delayed his schedule. And then the second sheet there did provide a map showing what he's planning on getting done or what he thinks he can physically get done this construction season. So yellow is work that would be completed this construction season. Pink areas are uncertainty if he can get done. So it may or may not get done when he sent this off back, you know, two weeks ago here. And then the white area there is areas that he's not planning on getting done just due to the, the volume of work left and the construction season is closing. So winter is coming, in case anybody was questioning or not. So we, we know that we have a, you know, shortened the construction season in Minnesota, so. Some of the details here, so the conditions are the, the things we talked about and I guess what's laid out in the change order is that anything that's tore up must be completed this construction season. So we've been pretty clear with him and he understands that. Because if we have a two-year construction season, if it's only one-year construction in front of your house, it's a lot better than two years in front of your house. So that he has agreed to. And then within the change order there, you can see our observation. I've approached it that the city's not interested in incurring any more costs due to his delay. And that we at WHCAST are not interested in incurring any more costs on our end because ultimately he had a completion date to meet. So he's formally agreed to that. Wire staff recommending this. I would agree that there was a fair amount of rain in the spring. He started on the low end of the project and everything drained there. We did minimal on a storm sewer. I think he said the first intersection there flooded twelve times this spring, which, which I think he has some valid concerns there. All contractors are struggling to get stuff done. Public Works has been very happy working with this contractor. Our staff has too. He's meeting with property owners. If anything, you know, temp water's down. He's always there fixing on Saturdays and whatnot. So that goes a lot, a long ways with Public Works and our, our staff and I think the citizens too. So that's been good. He's been good with any extra work. He has increased some crews. Later on in the construction season, he's kind of making up for some lost time. But throwing crews on jobs that you're in certain areas, in order to the whole area tore up, you can only do so much, so. So it's kind of staff's recommendation, sort of digging in with the liquidated damages in the construction contract to ultimately extend the date with again, the understanding laid out in the change order there. Then he will be incurring the additional observation time because our staff has been out there more hours than what was anticipated as due to his lack of production and lack of additional crews. So we think it's fair because when again, when he does good work and the citizens, you know, are, he's helpful with citizens, I think that goes a long way for myself and the city. So that's essentially what we have in the change order. We did formalize that in a change order just so we kind of weigh out the terms and how things are going to be done with essentially extending the completion date. But then putting it on the contractor to pay the additional cost that the city's going to incur through the additional timeline of the construction contract being extended out. So I'll pause there if you have any questions, comments, concerns.
So see extended day is June first, twenty twenty-seven, right? He's not going to miss that date?
We're, well, conversation we get there. I, well, I hope not.
Okay.
So just to be clear, two on these dates, two, maybe I should have maybe mentioned this. So we have interim completion dates and we have final completion dates and we have construction that waits a season. So anything that's constructed this year will be paved next year. And then any work that happens next year in twenty-six, that's why we're extending it to two. So we, we would ask for everything except that we call the final layer course, final lift of asphalt to be done in twenty, twenty-six. And then it would, the July fifteenth of twenty-sixth and the paving would just be done in twenty-seven. So come July fifteenth, everything should be done in all phases, concrete, driveways, turf restoration, you name it, except for the final wear course. And that's laid out deeper in the construction documents that I didn't address here, but that's, that's laid out of what the interim completion date is, so.
And he will be quite available when, if we get calls this winter? Concerns from citizens of why it's not done, we can forward them to him? Would he be willing to talk to him?
Yeah.
Explain it?
Cause. I mean, we, we have construction meetings. I mean, they are talking to, you know, our staff and his staff are talking. Gets approved tonight and then, you know, put that on their to-do list to let people know.
Okay.
And I'll work with Linda and administrative staff to get it out on Facebook and whatnot and social media.
So I'd like to make sure that he's, because he'd be the one with the answers anyways. And he could explain it easier to the citizens if there is concerns of why it didn't get done in front of their house.
Yep. I mean, that's, that's where we're at. It was a wet spring, I agree. But I also agree you could have thrown more people in and got it.
So I'd prefer if we could send them to him. So he knows this, just warn him if nothing else.
Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else got any questions, concerns, comments?
Well, I think if we're going to extend it to next year, this is a good year to do it because we don't have any big projects planned for next year anyway, right? So we're not going to be dealing with multiple areas of town being tore up at the same time next year, right?
That's correct. Yeah, we have a very small construction.
And we got longer to pay for it.
Yep, you would have that too. And I have worked with our grant, we received some states, this was the bonding bill project and they're fine with our extending our date.
Okay.
Very good there, so.
That was the only question I had. I just wanted to make sure that.
You're looking for a motion on the change order?
Yeah, just a motion and a vote on the change order.
Motion to approve the change order.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion to change. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mel. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Second item tonight, very similar, South Water Tower and Booster Station. When we went into bidding the project, we actually changed our date already during the bidding process because we were going to have no contractors bidding our project because it's busy season in water towers, the last couple of years too evidently. So we did extend that. As you see in this letter here, which is a formal request to extend the complete state, they're struggling to get done. I won't go through the reasons and everything else, you can read that. But basically they're looking at extending that or asking to extend that three months to November twenty-sixth from the August first completion date, so. Same thing there. This isn't surprising in the, you know, we've seen this across, we saw it going into bidding, we're seeing it across the board. Other clients and towns too are just struggling to get stuff done in the water tower world. So pause there and see if you have any questions on that.
Have we let EGAN Electric know that?
Um, I haven't. I'll be quite honest, I haven't talked to Joe, the fire chief either. I know he's, I always say he'll fight whatever fire we have over there.
Just to make them aware of the delay.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was one of their concerns as well, building was.
Yeah, one of their conditions of approval that we build this tower as fast as we can. I think we did that. We turned plans around. But if we don't have a contractor to build it.
Unless we want to go up there and start hanging iron and welding.
I think that's where we're at, so.
Keep that good relationship, let them know.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'll, I'll put that on my to-do list if you pass this.
So, so you said November completion of next year, but when, when would the, the water tower be able to go active? Because I assume they can do painting and stuff after it's already filled, right?
I think that's down in their timeline. I think that was the.
Yeah, I was trying to.
Yeah.
November sixth would be revised substantial completion, so it'd be.
Yep, disinfectant fill right there, eleven six. So yeah, right at the early November.
Oh, I see. Some of the stuff up above, it's actually behind it. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So they are going to do some work here this fall. I mean, they're going to put the, the base down and then construct over the winter.
They're going to be working out here too?
Yep, and then the booster station too. So that would be a booster station yet this fall.
And what was the original finish date?
August.
August first of twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And quite honestly, with having the booster station, we may have some opportunity to, I'll talk to our water system to have that booster station function without having the tower up. We may be able to boost some pressure over there, but I gotta work through that a little bit, so if we do have a fire over there.
Okay.
So it'll just be a little more delay for your, so just hold off on the fires out there, Joe.
Yeah. You can, you can dial that and I'll take it.
Alright. So is there any more questions for Brandon on that?
No, just ask for a motion to approve the request and we don't, we won't process the change order. Let them know that we approved it if you choose.
Take a motion to approve?
Take that motion.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls? Okay, thank you.
Can I ask Brandon a question?
Sure can.
How are we doing on the path underneath fourteen and the fifty-seven bridge? Where is that at?
Um, I thought you were going to go about the other paths. Yes, the other paths up in northwest are going to be paved here in the coming, coming days, so.
Oh, the.
Yeah, but, um, nothing, I'm, um, I shouldn't say nothing. I've been looking for an opportunity within MinDOT to apply, to get funding for that work. Haven't quite hit the timeline. I, Mel, I asked this, that's the council's next project that you want me to get funding for?
But a lot of people asked.
Trail.
Underneath that space.
I would think there's a lot of people walking in.
I think that was the direction at the, the last planning last spring too, I believe, so. Let me think about that. I can maybe report back. So we haven't made any formal applications. I've had preliminary conversations with MinDOT planning.
Yep.
I, like I mentioned to the former mayor, we even, we're talking about building a bridge over it into our Lyons Park area. But I think that's maybe a little bit of a stretch, but I mean, if MinDOT's got money, we're going to, we're going to talk to them, right? So, um, yeah, so that's where we're at. We've had preliminary conversations and I'm just kind of thinking about the right opportunity to, to go after funding. But if it's a priority, I'm happy to make it a priority for myself and push it forward, so.
Do you want to mention that project on thirty-four at all? Or is that premature?
I guess mention, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, you know, trails.
Yeah, yeah. We've, we did talk about our County Thirty-four Veterans Memorial from the roundabout through Lyons Park, over the railroad tracks, down eighth to Sunset Trail, the Dodge County Trail. I would love to redo that, bring that curb and gutter in and put a nice trail there and really connect the two. Knowing that that's not probably a feasible project, Eighth Avenue from Main Street to the north up to the trail, it's pretty new and it goes early two thousand, so in pretty good shape, so probably not in the cards. If you're happy for me to look at that, I would. But now we're talking millions of dollars to get a trail in there to do that. Could. So I know Dodge County was looking at grinding, resurfacing, grinding the concrete from the roundabout at fifty-seven through Lyons Park up to our Main Street. So there's an opportunity there to re-stripe that area and then potentially Eighth Street from Main up to the north end of the trail there, Sunset Trail. So I'm going to be working with Dodge County there to, to potentially re-stripe that. They have a request for the council to have no parking on one side. Because people walk along there anyway and it's not utilized from parking. There's a minimum amount of people parking along there. So I think if we could either just stripe it as no parking with a nice fog line and kind of, you know, get some more pedestrian friendly shoulder in that area, I think would be helpful. And then maybe even stripe bike lanes on both sides or one side. We're kind of working on that with the county, but I need to have their buy-in because it's a county road at the end of the day. But they're, they're open to it, so I just, I would love to connect that trail into Lyons Park, but we just don't have the right corridor for it. And it's just not the right time. If we were redoing it, then absolutely I'd be banging the desk trying to get pedestrian facilities in there. But it's just probably not the right time. Just the road's in too good a shape to spend that money. I'm happy to look at it if you'd like me to look into it more. But if I can spend ten thousand dollars of paint and get a, you know, decent trail system as opposed to a million dollars worth of reconstructing a whole roadway that doesn't really need it, I think that's where we're at. But if you guys want me to look into it, I'll look into it more.
I like the paint idea.
So, but it's not even as good a product.
No, but at the start and then it's, if it gets utilized more, maybe we can.
Yep.
Just to fire down the road.
Yep, we've done that on our projects, so.
You gotta try.
Did you have a school board member reach out about Sixteenth Street between the school and, and the football field about middle lane turning? I think we talked, I brought that up a while ago, just if there's any studies we'd have to do or what we'd have to talk about to turn that into.
I don't think it's wide enough, is it?
If we took the parking away.
I think it is wide enough. If you took the parking away, I think that was the plan long-term.
Yeah. Just because when, once you connect Sixteenth Street, you're going to see an influx of traffic from northwest going straight through. And when you have someone take a left to go into the high school parking lot, that's supposed to back up traffic because you're not supposed to go around them legally on the right hand because that's not illegal. You're going to see a larger backup all the way to that roundabout possibly, if you're waiting long enough in the morning.
I think your hardest part will be the parking though, because it's utilized.
Baseball.
It is utilized for baseball, but. But I mean, you go there any time of the year, there's people on the street, so you'd really have to.
I, I recognize that and I empathize with people that want to watch the sport from their car or from park there and walk. But a safety aspect of high school kids turning left.
That's true.
Going around, you have two cul-de-sacs there where people walk across the street. There's a lot of movement and I think safety is more important than convenience.
But how about this? Public Works has talked about our re-stripping of even Main Street with the chip seal project. If we need to have, if we can get Sixteenth Street opened up, which has started today, get that constructed, opened up. And then we can see this fall what Sixteenth Street looks like. Maybe then we could work on it over the winter and have something next spring if it was an easy, you know, repainting.
And is that a conversation we ask the superintendent or their board, like what do you think about this? Because it's.
It is, I would think we'd want to get some, almost maybe, I would say official request from them.
Yeah.
To consider it, because I would think we would want to have some kind of public hearing, because there is going to be some feedback.
There will be, yeah.
Parking up there.
And I'll, I'll do some work with our traffic engineers, see what they think.
Because if it's not a good idea, I don't want to do it. But when people are asking, I just, I wanted to bring that back up.
Absolutely. Our traffic engineers did the, the intersection report for the roundabouts. We know what the counts are and we know what projected counts will be. And if we got a recount in the game, we'll have a good enough guess to probably get you an answer. But I think it's something to get a look at. So I'll put that on my to-do list to do that kind of behind the scenes and then work it through with staff, so.
Thank you. Sorry to bring that all up now.
Oh, it's, we're here to solve problems. Whatever you guys got, we'll work on, so. That's all I had.
Um, I will just ask about Sixteenth Street Northwest. I know you said they started, but are they still looking?
They reminded the contractor we're expecting to be constructed this week.
Because I, I drove by there today and seen they just started ripping some trees off the daily. That was all they were doing.
Yep. They were still waiting on their storm sewer structures, which we approved quite some time ago. So I told them, uh, having one of these requests to the mayor is probably not going to sit as good as it has in some other ones. So we need to, it's probably more important to get that road done. So we reminded them of that.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
I've had multiple people ask. So I'm just, especially when they go walking by, when it says closed and they go walking by and they see nothing happening, they start getting nervous. Because you know as well as I do, you said winter's coming.
Winter's coming, so. Said we reminded them and we'll keep on them and make sure.
Alright. Thank you, Brandon. Next personnel. So they were, library board's hiring of, how do you say her name?
Tanya Gettle.
Tanya Gettle, okay. So the library board would like to us to approve the hiring of Tanya Gettle as library assistant starting at grade three, step three of the twenty twenty-six pay scale, which is twenty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. I would take a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Nothing from the attorney. Correspondence, if you have any questions? Not roundtable. This is merely discussion, no decision making, just a reminder. It is to talk about the Casson Fire CIP, Fire Tank.
Sure, we've got information in your packet there. We've got the CIP list there. And then a lot of information on the tanker truck. I know I had some meetings with Councilmember Johnson earlier this month. And he had some suggestions about a couple of different things that we may be doing where we may be sort of siloing some money for some of these projects year over year. That'll sort of, you know, usually what we do is we typically take capital that's unspent and we put that in stabilization. In some cases, it may make sense to sort of silo that in a, a building fund or a truck fund or something like that. I mean, it ends up coming out one way or the other, but I think that's not a bad solution to making sure that we're being as precise with things as we can be. But one of the things he wanted to talk about a little bit was this tanker truck. I know that the capital committee has reviewed that. There are a couple of options here. I know he had some feedback. I don't know, Paul, if you wanted to talk to it or how you'd like to proceed?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the CIP here and it looks like we basically got a kind of a need list that spans about twenty years from today, right? So just, I just did some quick math here on this notepad and if I total up the costs throughout, through twenty forty-six, five point two million dollars. Over twenty years, that's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year. We are currently living a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, which is a pretty substantial shortfall. If we look at a compressed time scale for the next ten years, four million dollars, of course, that's four hundred thousand dollars a year. So we are way short on those goals. So I just think that we need to take a real close look on how we're going to be able to deal with that spend deficit there. Whether one, do we really need to replace Tanker Two? To me, I'm looking at this list and that seems like the least important thing on the list. I, I think the value of the three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars plus for replacing Tanker Two doesn't seem to be there for me compared to some of the other items that we need to prepare for. So I guess obviously there's. that we need to prepare for, so, I guess, obviously there's, there's multiple ways that we can deal with deficits, whether extending lifetimes and possibly buying, trying to find use, though I know that's very difficult, but I think that we've got a pending major issue that we're gonna run into if we don't start making some tough decisions now.
Well, I know your fire department is always going out for grants, that covers a lot of, not all of it, but that does offset quite a bit, that's why they apply for grants, that's why they go out for more, I know, I don't know if they'll be spending any, once their charitable gambling goes, they'll, that money goes to the Fire Relief Association, which can go back into the fire department potentially, which would help offset some costs for equipment, so those are things that they've been working on, and I can't guarantee how much it is, but I mean, that's definitely a start, we gotta, it's not listed here, but that's income that they're working on, they're looking at a grant right now for that tanker too, but grants don't come until you purchase property, you have to purchase before you can get the funding, on some of it, not all of it, but.
Okay.
If I'm correct, right, Joe?
Yeah, it depends on the grant.
Yeah.
You know, the current grant that we have is an AFG grant, so right now we're at the mercy of the federal government, we don't know if, if they're even going to honor any of the twenty twenty-five grant applications that they got, or if they're just gonna cut it off and move forward, going forward, we, we still have not heard yet, I do believe it was, I don't know if it's the other end, is it September or the end of October, when the awards were supposed to be given, or they were supposed to start notifying, so very, very soon we should know whether or not we got any of that grant funding for, for that truck, so. But yeah, every, any and every grant opportunity we, we get, we, we apply, so.
I guess it'd be helpful to know, like, over historical time, like, what percentage of the cost has been covered by grants versus how much as we had before, right, because I have no...
Well, how much of a grant are you planning for right now, Joe?
The, the grant right now, it would, it's a hundred percent for the truck.
I have no problem approving a hundred percent grant, right?
Yeah, it would be a full, I believe, yeah, I mean, I would, I would have to look back, it's, I mean, like I said, it's been over years since we applied for it, but I would have to confirm, you know, but I know it's, it's close to a hundred percent, if it's not a hundred percent, so. But yeah, a lot of them have, you know, five percent, ten percent, fifteen percent, you know, you know, matches sometimes, so, but I would, I would have to confirm that, you know, so, if that is, with that being said, we just applied, if you would want me to be bringing those to you for approval before we applied, I am more than willing to, to do that, I just always assumed that free money is free money and we'll take it even if there's a little bit of a, a hook at the end, but that's, that's my opinion, not, not your decision, so, I don't wanna, because it's easy enough for us to just say, hey, we've got this grant, we're gonna apply for it, you know, because like that AFG grant, it's like a couple of month process of applying, because it's...
Well, in my opinion, I mean, you wouldn't have to bring it to us, but you could just give a FYI, be the staffer to, you know, to say that you're applying for them?
Easy enough to share that with him, so he can make a note.
You know, those little things, that, that's, then we kind of see it coming, you know, I heard about this one, so that's why I knew, but not everybody does, so we...
Yep, and this one in particular, we, we had, we specifically had to list that specific truck, so if we were awarded that grant, we, we have to get rid of that truck, so that's...
Sure.
That's how that grant works.
Yeah.
But it's difficult to get, so.
So basically, you know, you're kind of in a holding pattern until you know whether you got that grant, and you think it's gonna be by the end of October, you said?
I believe so.
But I definitely share some of Paul's concerns, you know, with the, the area where we live, you know, we have multiple departments, they're very close as well, and it's hard to see, you know, Byron and Dodge Center and Casson and Hayfield and Manorville, you know, there's a lot of capital money, you know, we find like, you know, and Joe knows very well, like, this equipment's very specialized, it's very expensive, and I think, you know, trying to be, making sure they're being efficient and not duplicative with some of the other departments potentially where there's some shared equipment or something like that, I think that's very important for us to take a look at, especially the life-saving equipment, you know, things that we really need, you know, the protecting the firefighters is really my paramount concern, making sure they have SCBAs and the proper, you know, equipment for their safety, you know, whether the tanker is twenty-five years old or twenty-six years old or twenty-three years old, like, does it hold water, you know, I wanna make sure the firefighters are safe, that's always my biggest concern, so.
Long-term, at some point, that conversation of blending Casson and Manorville might come up again for fire departments, I know, I know it's, it's tricky with all the pensions and all those things, but would some, if that ever did happen, would that alleviate some of the costs, because maybe sharing them, the vehicles, would that help?
Well, sure, you have a broader budget, and you'd probably be able to have more efficiency, you know, for example, like, they've got two tankers, we got two tankers, that's more tankers than you need for, for our coverage area.
Yeah, because I don't know if Manorville has a tanker, but like, we're taking ours to South Fork, and then we're taking it on, on calls outside of town, right? And if we take it, is it always being used, or is it just there, I know it's a safety thing, but if it's not being used, it's more just transporting, but if we ever did combine with Manorville, and they already have one, like, where can we save money? I know it's a really tricky thing, and I know they have a new fire chief, and it's, I don't, there's never a right time or a wrong time to have that conversation again, but if it could alleviate some costs and save money for both groups of taxpayers, it's not a bad thing.
Well, yeah, keep us posted on that grant.
Yeah, as soon as I hear anything, I will definitely let Tim know, so you can pass that on to you guys.
With that, then I guess I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Ryan?
Second.
Thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.